Good evening, everyone. Um, we are going to, uh, welcome to the City of Bloomington, uh, council. Uh, we're going to call the meeting to order. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. Good evening, everyone. Um, we are go- Wow. Don't like the sound of my voice.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Bullen.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milambe.
Here. So I think we're gonna do, um, what I have on my agenda here, recognition and appointments? Okay, alright. So we're gonna start with a proclamation for Building Safety Month. And we have Chris McAllister here to accept it. If you wanna step forward, don't be shy. And same as usual, read a proclamation and then you and I will get a photo op, which I know you're looking forward to.
Yes, I am.
Okay, good answer. So, whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe and construction, the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, safety for all, building codes in action, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation and energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider their, the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Mboke Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month. Thank you. Yeah, okay, awesome.
Thank you, I just think I say a quick thank you to Mayor and the council. I appreciate the opportunity to, this recognition of Building Safety Month is an opportunity to raise awareness about building safety issues. Uh, for those of you who aren't aware, the International Code Council is the publisher of our adopted building codes. Um, in addition, ICC provides training opportunities and certifications for both our inspection staff and for contractors that work within the city. Uh, mostly I have to say thank you, uh, behalf of building safety staff, but mostly to say, to thank the inspectors themselves. It's a very important and appreciated recognition of the work performed by the city inspection staff and their continued efforts to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have a proclamation as Drinking Water Week. We have Kevin Cothe to receive the proclamation. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas, drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, hygiene needs for our residents. And whereas, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, we commend the hard work performed by the entire water sector, including designers of capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, and pipe crew members maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to the tap. And whereas, the coronavirus pandemic has further shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas, we all, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the, the residents of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution and practice water conservation to benefit the community. Now therefore, I, Mboke Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim May 7 through 13, 2023, as Drinking Water Week.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I accept this proclamation on behalf of all the hard-working staff we have that provide safe and reliable drinking water to our community. It's truly a precious resource and we take it for granted when we turn the faucet on every day and it's there. Um, there's other countries where they don't have that. And so, we're really blessed to have that and the resource and the people that bring it to us every day. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, next we have a, a proclamation, um, on the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. So, whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center of, on functions of local government and community. And whereas, professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Mboke Malambe, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby recognize, uh, the week of April 30th through May 6, 2023, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Leslie Yocum, and Deputy City Clerk Amanda Stutzman, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the City of Bloomington. Thank you.
Um, really on behalf of our entire department, the big mighty four is what I would call us, um, is, is the way that I would like to thank you for this. Um, council, mayor, it's truly an honor to serve you and it's an honor to serve the community and to ensure the transparency that everyone deserves and that we uphold the law just the same. So, thank you for this and we look forward to serving you longer.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, back to work. Okay, um, so next we're, um, going to public comment, do we have any?
We have one more recognition, if you can do the appointments and reappointments.
Gosh, I'm just gonna rush towards the exit.
Alright, uh, we have Josh, uh, John Hanson to the Airport Authority Board. That one's a reappointment. Um, also a reappointment of John Argenzano, I'm gonna mess that up, I apologize, uh, to the Library Board. And the last reappointment is Katrina Parker to the Library Board as well. I'm not aware of them being, um, in the audience, but if they are, we'd like to recognize them.
No, I don't think they are.
Alright, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. And so now to, uh, public comment?
Yes, we just have one person who registered to speak in person. That's Noah Tang and no emailed public comment were received.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. So, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their, uh, address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Okay? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Noah Tang. I live at 504 East Olive in Bloomington. Uh, and I am, uh, the leader of the, um, Bloomington Revivalist, which is a Strong Town, uh, Strong Towns Community Organization here. We're focused on bottom-up redevelopment and engaging in the Strong Towns Movement, building energy. For example, um, the Strong Towns method is observe issues in our community, make small changes, and then repeat. Last month, April 29th, um, when it was, what, 40 degrees out and raining, sleeting, um, I had about 27 volunteers, including two city council members, Councilmember Kearns and Danenberger, come, uh, join us in cleaning up trash litter downtown Bloomington. In total, we're two hours, we had about, let's say, 20-ish bags of trash. And, uh, one thing that we do at Strong Towns is make sure we, we really understand what the issues are uh, and make sure we pay attention to it so we can make some changes. Uh, mostly, uh, I would say, the trash that we picked up on that Sunday were cigarette butts everywhere, uh, in, in downtown. Mostly, uh, concentrated outside work sites, um, and, uh, major bars. And our group will be continuing to clean up, at least on a monthly basis, downtown Bloomington. But one recommendation that we have for the city council and planning staff is when we work through the, um, cityscape, streetscape, uh, plan for downtown Bloomington, add public trash, uh, uh, public ashtrays closer to bars. Uh, so we don't have to pick up, uh, thousands of cigarette butts every, every month. And in the meantime, we will keep every, uh, try to keep everything clean. But our, the goal of our movement is to get as many people engaged in, uh, the civic process and that includes getting our hands dirty. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're now gonna move on to the consent agenda and is there a motion to approve?
Excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to pull 7H, please.
7H, okay. Okay. Alright, is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7H?
So moved.
Okay. Alright, so who wants to move first? Okay, Councilmember Ward and then second Councilmember Becker. Alright, sounds good. We have a link, right? Okay, uh, the consent agenda passes with the exception of item 7H. No nays to announce. Now we're gonna move on to item 7H, Councilmember Bullen.
Yeah, I'm neutral on this, as a matter of fact, I probably won't in favor. I don't have a, a problem with having, um, a special liquor license for the farmer's market added. But, um, standard procedure, in my mind, is to have the minutes included in the packet. Because, public hearing occurs at the Planning, Zoning, and Liquor Commission. That's where the due process falls. And I would like to make a motion to table this until the minutes are available to be placed in the packet.
What is it?
Yeah, um, so actually, at the Liquor Commission, there was not a public hearing that was held for this. Um, when you, when we do a public hearing, we do it for the creation of a license specific to a business. And so this is creation of the license type. So it did appear on the agenda, um, and it was a conversation before the Liquor Commission. Um, I included the detail in the background of, uh, the information that was, uh, discussed. It was pretty limited. But it, like I said, in the background is there. The minutes have not been completed yet, which is why they hadn't been attached. But, so I respectfully, um, understand your concern there, but just wanted to clarify that it wasn't a public hearing. That said, if it was approved this evening, then, uh, the, the goal would be that then this new classification would become available and then interested parties for the farmer's market would then be able to apply. Those would go before the Liquor Commission for the public hearing and the creation of the license and then come back for final consideration of the actual licensed business, um, here at council, so.
Okay, so just for clarification, this is being created and then any business that already holds a license will have to go through the due process at the Liquor Commission.
That is correct.
And then approved by us.
Correct, this is just a new license classification type. And then, any businesses that want to pursue this type of license will have to apply, go before the Liquor Commission, and then come back for your approval.
Now I feel comfortable.
I'm glad.
I'll make a motion to approve, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler? Are we doing a link? Okay, uh, the item passes, there are no nays to announce. And we are going to now move on to the regular agenda with, uh, item 8A, a consideration in action on an ordinance amending the budget, uh, ordinance for the fiscal year 2024. And ordinance authorizing a construction agreement between the City of Bloomington and AFE Construction in the amount of $577,000 and $550,000 as requested by Public Works Department and the Economic and Community Development Department. And turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, speak, obviously, specific to this agenda item, uh, which is, uh, an action item for council to, uh, consider. But take a step back and, uh, speak to, uh, the new council members and, and more so, uh, the community with an update on, uh, the city's, uh, space needs. Uh, so, specific to this project, uh, we are requesting approval by council. Uh, we received two bids to, uh, build out the, uh, second floor of this building here, Government Center. You see Public Works attached to, uh, this item because they run the lead on the facility side of, uh, needs for, uh, for the city as an organization. This build is actually for Director Melissa Hahn in the Economic Community Development Department. Uh, Deputy City Manager Tyus also has been very involved in many of these builds. So now I'm gonna step backwards and say, when I was hired here about five years ago, uh, space was of major concern to, uh, the council that hired me. And we really have been working this plan over the last five years. This is the largest build, uh, you know, up to this point. And I think that we've invested in seven or eight different, uh, smaller builds because we were fractured in different areas around, uh, uh, the, the city, but primarily in this government center. And we've probably spent about $550,000 to $600,000 total. So this one is gonna be about $577,000. Again, this was one of two bids. I think the second bid was around $700,000, $750,000. So this is the, uh, the lesser amount, uh, and did meet all the qualifications and requirements of, uh, that bid. But space, we share this government center, uh, with, uh, the county. Uh, we're co-tenants, but we're also co-owners, uh, by agreement. Uh, the Public Building Commission is a statutorily-created entity that truly holds, holds the title to this building. And, uh, the city and the county are tenants. But there is an agreement that, uh, we actually have ownership and equity in this property. So this $577,000 build, you know, we're not just throwing money into a build for, uh, something that we don't have equity and ownership or title in because, uh, we, we do and we could exercise the existing agreement and have title, um, uh, you know, upon executing, uh, the terms of that agreement. Couple of things. Talking about space needs. We saw this, there, there have been many opportunities throughout the city to, uh, purchase buildings, renovate, uh, wanna stay in the downtown when we talk about the primary hub, you know, the primary city government. But we see opportunities to, uh, take what already exists for us, and that's this building, and make further investment in it, uh, versus, uh, seeking to build a city hall, uh, at several million dollars somewhere else. And we feel that we are satisfying the, uh, space needs, you know, not just, uh, in the short term, but long term. That's why you see this investment in this, uh, building. We also see an opportunity, uh, with, uh, the residents of the county and the residents of the city being able to come to one building downtown and be able to, uh, complete whatever business they might have. One thing that we have done, and it's been extremely well-received, is the hub. It was an idea that, uh, the Deputy City Manager and I had. It's on the, uh, northeast, uh, end of this building. Actually, the, uh, city clerk, uh, Lesley Yocum, uh, is the one that truly took that build and it is a one-stop shop. It truly is that primary point as, uh, a city resident comes into this building and tries to conduct business with, uh, the city. We see other opportunities with the county, uh, possibly, uh, when we look at IT. Uh, you know, even if it's not, uh, a combined department, we could have, uh, a shared space. Uh, there are so many other opportunities, HR, uh, that's central point, a hub expanded. So I mean, there are a number of things, uh, when we look at these builds that we have done over the last four or five years that lend itself to try to be more efficient. Um, it's also, uh, speaks to the culture of the organization, the services that we deliver to the community. And, uh, this puts Melissa's team on one floor. And, uh, we're also, after I turn this over to the Deputy City Manager, we're going to, uh, let Melissa talk a little bit just about what economic community development, uh, does. And, uh, Billy, uh, you know, you really have run the lead, uh, from the Administration Office on all of these, you know, please add.
The other button. Thank you, um, uh, City Manager Gleason. Uh, council members and mayor, um, as the manager said, and, and one of the things that we wanna make sure that we accomplish today is that we let you and the public know that this renovation is part of a bigger picture. It's, it's easy to look at, frankly, the price tag and wonder about it, but it's part of a bigger initiative to, to address city space needs. Uh, Phil, if you would move the slides forward, please. As the manager said, we've been talking, we and the city have been talking about, uh, space for, for years. Um, there are plans and other things that I found in old boxes that go back for, frankly, decades. We've had multiple space studies and, and no real action taken to holistically address some of the, the issues that we have. Um, as a matter of fact, and there's a, the reason I mention this is that when the manager arrived, he and, uh, then Corporation Counsel, uh, Jeff Shergens, stopped a $2 million building purchase, which was about to happen. And the reason that was important was it gave us, and we did it in an effort to reevaluate what we already had. As we talked about, we're a co-owner here and a co-tenant here in the Government Center. We also knew that the space here was underutilized and perhaps not utilized the most efficiently. And so, what we did was to take a look at whether some of what we already have could, for the most part, meet our, 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 our space needs. Uh, and really, there were a couple of questions that we asked ourselves. One was that, could existing, um, city-owned spaces meet our current needs? But also, as part of that process, could we become better at serving the public? Um, we, we, we often hear in government, and sometimes earned, we earn it frankly, that it's, we're not the most friendly in terms of, of serving people. It's not easy to deal with, with city government. Things like, I had to go to five, six, seven departments in order to get an answer to my question, just things like that. So, uh, it, we looked at this from a broader perspective to say, hey, can we address some of those things? It's part of a potential move. Um, can we use technology more efficiently in order to serve people better? And so, as we looked at that, the answers that we came to were, 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 were yes, were mostly yes, at least in part. Uh, next slide, please, Phil. Um, as we, 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 once we decided that that was something that was doable and made sense versus building anew, um, we, we looked to do a couple of things. One was to build the hub, um, as the face of our city government, as the front door to our city government, where people could come in and get any question answered, but they would be, they wouldn't be passed around to different departments frankly. If they needed to come here and meet with another department, we would make sure that they got where they needed to go instead of sending him here and there and here and there. Um, and it's been very successful in our opinion. Um, again, we're, it's still a work in process, but, but we're, we're getting traffic. Um, we're getting people in the door. We have cross-trained the, the staff in the department so that their data operate in silos whereby they can answer most questions. And if not, they're honest to say, hey, I can't get you, I don't know the answer, but I'll get you an answer, and they do follow up on those questions. Um, on the screen, you can see some of the, the examples of, of the amount of walk-in traffic and the number of calls we get in the department as well. Um, again, those numbers are cyclical in that, for example, when parks programs open, those numbers go up because people are signing up for parks programs. And they can do that here versus having to go to the multiple departments. The other thing we talked about was technology and whether or not we could better utilize technology. One of the things that we've done is invested in Invoice Cloud, which is our, our, our utility billing system. If you see if there are ways that we can utilize that and other technologies. to see if there are ways that we can utilize that and other technology in order to become more efficient and allow people to to not necessarily have to come to City Hall in order to do business with us. And we've seen results there. In terms of the the number of electronic payments, that's gone up probably five thousand per month in terms of the number of people who utilize that system to pay electronically. And that's everything from going on our website to pay by text to automatic withdrawals, those different types of 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 systems that we now have as part of the software, and that number started to increase. The other thing that we've done is is worked, Invoice Cloud, part of the system encourages people to sign up for for paperless. And so we've had people, the number of people sign up for paperless billing as well. Again, that's may not seem like a big deal, but that's over the course of a year, one hundred and forty four thousand bills not having to be printed in mail. And so that's a big number for us. I apologize for not looking behind me, I did just, I'm sorry. So we created the hub. The other thing we started to do was to move move departments once we realized where they would need to go. To be clear, we always knew that we would need to do some level of build-out. This building, I believe, was opened in two thousand and three, and my understanding is that hadn't had a major renovation before we started to do this since that time. I know Melissa's department had not. And so we knew there would be some buildup, but we started to move departments into this building. Next slide, please, Phil. So today, as a manager talked about, today, we've done nine total moves, you can read the screen, obviously. Admin, HR, legal clerk, IT, others to this building. Parks and Public Works are in City Hall. One of the issues we had with City Hall in the past with the bulk of our departments being there was that there are some ADA and accessibility issues, and so we're addressing those now. We're working on the elevator, we're working on the parking lot as well to make sure that those buildings are ADA accessible because we know that that, A, it's the right thing to do, but B, we know it's important to us as a city and you as a council. Facilities, we had, we have a building at three oh one East Jackson Street that was in terrible shape. Part of it was used for storage, and the other part was used just sort of not really used frankly, I'll say. The Facilities Department did a build-out there, and they are now relocated to three oh one East Jackson. We've got four moves left. A couple are are simpler in that they're just moving from one floor here to another floor. We've got finance that still needs to move as well, and then a partial move of Public Works. As the manager said, to date, excluding today's item, we spent roughly five hundred sixty thousand dollars on those moves, which it's not necessarily the comparison to make, but when you talk about the fact that the city was on the cusp of signing a two million dollar agreement to buy a building that didn't include furniture, that didn't include any rehab or rebuilding, it's significantly less than what we would have been spending as part of that. And significantly less than for sure, having to build a new. But having said that, going forward, you've talked, I believe, during your orientation and and other and other times, there will be some building necessary as we talk about the need for Public Works campus, et cetera, et cetera. But that is significantly less than what it would have taken to build a new for this project. And so with that, I'll pass things to Melissa Hahn, Director of Economic and Community Development, to really talk about her department. Some of the things that, the number of things that they do and why this matters to her, so.
Thank you. Thank you, W City Manager Tyus, Council, Mayor, City Manager. I'm very excited about this build-out. Phil, next slide, please. Just high-level overview, I know a lot of the new council members got to hear my rundown and orientation, but just for everybody in the public, just kind of a high-level overview of what we do in the Economic and Community Development Department. We develop, plan, build, and enhance our community. Through our through our Economic and Downtown Development Division, we help grow the local economy by attracting, retaining, and helping our local businesses expand. We are also working on the continued revitalization of the downtown, which was recently re-accredited by Main Street America and Illinois Main Street. We plan our community through a comprehensive plan, thinking about what we want our community to look like in twenty years. Everything related to zoning, land use, historic preservation, issuing of Rust and Funk grants. We help build the community, making sure that it's a safely built environment, including our fire inspections. And then we enhance by setting standards of how we want our community to be maintained, doing the rental inspection and registration program, and also assisting our community through all of our different grant programs for rehabilitation of affordable housing and other nonprofit grants as well. So with this renovation project, we know that having all of our department staff on one floor will help improve our opportunities for collaboration across divisions. We're already starting to see that, really excited about it. So looking forward to seeing that continue to grow. And then also just helping to increase efficiency. I think having everybody together, we can help each other in ways that we're seeing or experiences that we may have had in in creating better efficiency. One of those will also be Open Gov. We do have that currently up and running for our Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, vacant commercial building registration, and for the ARPA Small Business. But we're slowly working on getting all of our permits and other applications in there. So we really look forward to having that open and available to the community. And then, most importantly of all, with this renovation project, just knowing that for the department, we'll be able to improve customer service. So a definite goal for us there. Next slide, please. And then just kind of wanted to provide some highlights from calendar year 2022. This is definitely not everything, but just to give an overview of the many, many things that we do, we made one thousand one hundred and three business contacts, one of those being Ferrero, who made an announcement of their two hundred and fourteen million dollar expansion, second one in Bloomington for the new Kinder Bueno facility, which will bring two hundred and fifty new jobs to Bloomington. We know that, you know, people breathe life into a community, and we had eighty-three events that we hosted in the downtown, twenty-seven of those being outdoor farmers markets. Saw an average attendance of fifteen hundred people with about thirty-five vendors per week. And we distributed over sixteen thousand dollars in Leek Match through a grant that we received through Link Up Illinois. We issued more than seven thousand building permits with a total construction valuation of over a hundred and sixty-four million dollars. We performed more than five thousand two hundred building inspections. We processed one thousand four hundred and sixty-two rental registration applications, five hundred and forty-one contractor registration applications. We issued Rust and Funk grants, Rust about sixty-six thousand dollars and Funk about seventeen thousand. Some of that does carry over into the other fiscal year. We made some updates to Chapter Forty-four, doing some text amendments to streamline our planning and zoning actions, ensuring the integrity of the projects while removing unintended hurdles to development. We responded to over two thousand property maintenance inspections. We distributed over a hundred and ninety-four thousand for a CDBG housing rehabilitation. We worked with the John M. Scott Commission to help them distribute nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in grants to healthcare and social service organizations to support health and well-being in McLean County. We distributed sixty-eight thousand in public facility and infrastructure grants to CDBG funds. We allocated four hundred and twenty-four thousand in IDA and housing rehabilitation projects and provided fifty-six thousand for community planning, fair housing, and job training activities, once again, through our CDBG funding. We provided twenty-two thousand in CDBG CV rental and utility assistance to help those impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We distributed over two hundred and sixteen thousand to local nonprofits for homeless prevention services, distributed eighty-one thousand in public service grants through CDBG. We completed eighteen rehabilitation projects with our funding from CDBG and IDA. So if we're doing the math, there's twelve months in a year, can't work through all those months, and we were still able to complete eighteen, so very proud of that. But most importantly and biggest highlight, we have an amazing team. This is really going to make a lot of improvement for their quality of life for the time that they spend here at the city of Bloomington and their day-to-day jobs. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Melissa and Billy. We've approached, again, these builds, you know, you you get one chance at a first impression. You know, when you're talking about the community, the consumer of, you know, us as an organization, the services that we provide, and this is a big one for us. I mean, if there was ever a department that is really forward-facing, sets the mood for development within the community, it is the Economic Community Development Department. So we're excited about this. Thank you for giving us about twenty minutes to talk about this, you know, as a larger plan. But specifically, this build before council tonight, we request approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I should probably add that the the building that was being considered for purchase, I don't think would have fulfilled all the needs that we we had in terms of space, so. So I'm going to give Council an opportunity to ask questions. I think we have fifteen minutes. Can we put that up on the? I was going to say board, but screens, okay, thank you. And so please remember, there's quite a few of us here, so maybe ask one question or a couple, but we'd like to stay within the time limit, so thank you. So we'll start with Councilmember Ward and then Councilmember Crumpler.
Thanks for this presentation and for the compelling evidence that you provide. It was really helpful to have have all of these numbers and just had a couple of questions of the, so there have been nine of thirteen moves, and it sounds like like we've spent a little more than half a million dollars for those. Any idea, just ballpark, what the what the other four, well, no, another half million for this one, so that would leave three, right? What are what are the other departments that we're talking about for the other three moves and any kind of ballpark figure what that might involve?
I'm, I I don't want to speculate, but I'm going to say in my mind a a much smaller number, and here's here's why I would say that. The the remaining moves are finance from City Hall here, which doesn't require much, if any, real build-out because we've already done a part of it. Moving, we've done part of the Public Works move. The second move is the other half of the Public Works move to City Hall. And then one is moving parts of Melissa's team from the third floor to the second floor once that work is completed, which is just a floor move. And then the other is moving diversity, equity, and inclusion from a current space to their space. And so they're not big moves, and I don't have a dollar amount, we've got to pay movers. And some some building, but they're not, we're not talking major moves. Sorry, it doesn't really answer your question, but I don't have a dollar figure for that.
No, that's fine, and I'll move approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler, do you want to second or?
Sure, I'll I'll second.
Okay, all right.
And thank you, Mayor. Melissa, thank you for coming before us this evening. Again, you know, compelling data, the amount of work your department does. You know, and it seems to me that twenty years is a long time, and remodeling is is well overdue. And I, it doesn't, you know, I would, I would say that the kinds of changes you're talking about can really make a difference in the culture, you know, of work, and and I I I think that's very exciting. I wondered, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Director Hurt came before us and talked about his ADA planet, and I wondered how this remodel fits into that and what kind of ADA compliance efforts are being made as part of this remodel, if you could talk about that, please.
Yeah, so with, I mean, all of our remodel is the, as they're developing that, I mean, they'll have to meet all all of the guidelines, you know, per the building code, so making sure that there's accessibility, you know, through the front door of the office space, making sure that our counter levels are at a height if somebody, you know, should be in a wheelchair, making sure there's enough space, you know, for people to get around the cubicles and the different office spaces within the the building or the office suite, so.
That sounds great. The second thing I was wondering about, there's a conference room as part of the remodel. Do you currently have a conference room or is this a new, this is a new part of, will be a new part of your department?
So we do currently have a conference room. Part of the new, the the one that we're proposing in the build will be accessible from the lobby. So currently, our conference room is at the very back of our space. It requires us to bring visitors in all the way through the employee space. So this will help us, number one, for our visitors as they're coming for the first time to talk about developing in our community, will not have to walk through all of the office spaces, but also for safety for our employees that we won't need to bring anybody back into their work area.
Great, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward.
I just thought of one more thing. Where does this room fit into all the moving and renewal and so forth? And I want to just make the comment that where I am sitting, where every member of this council is sitting, is not accessible. And to me, that sends a message.
Only, the only thing I'll say is that you're correct, and the new build of the dais, which is coming this summer, will address those discussability issues.
Awesome. Councilmember Bullitt?
Yeah, I I support this. I think that's a good idea, primarily for efficiency, not only to serve people better, but but when you're efficient, you save money rather than running up and downstairs, you can actually be talking to each other. But I will reiterate what Councilmember Ward said about the, not only the ADA for the dais, but I would like to not have to, it's not ADA compliant for me because I have to go like this to see my my other council members. So it'd be nice if this area was was fixed a little bit, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I I think in addition to that, I'm I'm looking at the chairs. I think they're pretty dated, seventies maybe. And and I do know, and and it's not just for, you know, what they look like, but I I know they're very uncomfortable, and it's doesn't provide a whole lot of back support as well. So that's, it's not healthy, so that's something that should probably be considered.
Actually, I I'll speak to this room because there's been some good questions and comments made. Now, this room is shared space with the county, so it's it's an area that we've had to work jointly, and it's gone very well. But even the IT system, you know, what we use for our meetings is different than what the county has used. So getting the approvals through the county Finance Committee and then getting their approvals and then us working through what our needs are, it's been a good collaboration. It's probably gone a little bit slower than what both entities would like, but the final product is going to be very nice.
Awesome. Okay, I think we can go ahead and vote. Okay, the item passes or no nays to announce. And we are moving to the next item on the agenda, which is City Manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community, two quick slides, couple of comments. Second Saturday sidewalk sales is this coming Saturday on May thirteenth, and the hours vary. But don't we have that up on the website somewhere, the participating? Yep, I thought so, on the city's website. Second slide, please. Downtown Farmers Market, this Saturday, seven thirty to twelve. We kicked it off, and it's, you know, it just continues to grow and be recognized as a premier farmer's market. I know the community knows that, but I just like saying it again, truly something to be proud of. The other thing that I was going to share with storms last night, you had the Parks and Recreation Crew with the Assistance Public Works. We had twenty damaged sites out, so there was some debris, tree removal, that kind of stuff. And crews did an excellent job, no injuries that were reported during the storm itself. And to the crews that were working on it, so just wanted to provide that update. And then for the the new council members, with one done, I count a hundred and thirty-nine meetings to go, you know, during during your four-year term. But this is more so for the community, from my vantage point, along with the directors and the staff that have had, you know, a very quick and fair amount of interaction, we're excited. We're going to pick up right where we left off with the old council, gain momentum on many of the things that are occurring at the city, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again. There is no council coming in that is going to have more come before them in their first six months than this council. And uh I know that uh staff are going to do our very best to have them prepped so that they're on firm ground to make uh the very important decisions that will be coming before them, so we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you, and uh on the mayor comment, I want to also echo, um, you know, what City Manager Gleason said, really looking forward to uh working with this council. Last uh Monday was great, the uh um, the swearing-in ceremony was really nice to to have everyone here. Um, and I think we uh we're going to accomplish a lot, uh, you know, with this council, uh, just like we did with the previous one. Um, one thing that I also wanted to to mention is that on on Friday, um, both uh myself and uh Deputy City, um Deputy City Managers, um Tyus and Jergens, we call them the Twin Towers. Um, we um, uh, we had a uh an opportunity to visit with Congressman Sorenson. Uh, he came and, you know, we did a quick tour of the downtown and showed him some areas of uh interest and and where we are, um, what we are hoping to to accomplish. And he did the same thing with the town of Normal, so it's, I know he's, he's not, um, uh, you know, he he lives in the Rockford area, but it's great to see him take uh an interest uh in um in in our area, um, city of Bloomington, town of Normal. Um, and and also, we we definitely appreciate his support uh in terms of a couple of the projects, you know, earmarks that he submitted uh through the appropriations uh process in in Congress, uh, Lucas Colton and um Hamilton Bund of Commerce. Okay, so, um, so that's fantastic. And with that, I'm going to give a council an opportunity to say, um, make comments, and with so our Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to start out by saying thank you to a number of people. Um, with reference to the storms last night in particular, I wanted to say thank you to the city crews who helped to clear things up, and the Bloomington Police Department um dispatchers who were were quite friendly and kind to me when I called last night and this morning. They were, everybody was amazing with this. In two, the two blocks around my house alone, we had three large trees that were probably two or three stories tall, just snapped off. Um, and debris everywhere, um, blocking streets, blocking people from being able to get out of their houses, um, at the at the church across the street from my house, um, wires dangling and so forth. And that was what I left for work seeing in my neighborhood. And when I came home this afternoon, it was all cleared up, and that was really awesome to see. So thank you to everybody who had a hand in that. Um, the other thing I wanted to say thank you about was this past Thursday night, um, the Carl Brohman Spiritual Care Department hosted um a pilot project of um our compassion cupboard where we um, we are putting together food bags to send home with patients who are discharging, who are food insecure. And we had a community-wide event, um, thank you to our faith community partners and members of the community who helped put those groceries into bags. Um, thank you to my colleague, Cody Hendricks, and to Officer Brent Parsley from the Community Engagement Unit of the Bloomington Police Department. Um, together, we, in the course of about an hour, we put together 80 bags of groceries um that we will have now to be able to send home um with patients who otherwise might be going home to empty cupboards when they're, when they're not feeling well to begin with. Um, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Oh, yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, as of May 1st, um, the changes in the nine wars went into effect, and I would like to just take a minute to welcome the families who are now in Ward 9, um, in the districts. Encourage them to reach out to me if you have any questions or would like to get to know me as your um representative in Bloomington City Council. Um, I do provide a monthly update that I send out that highlights some things coming before council and recent, um, some of these are summaries of recent actions, so please email me, and if you're interested in that, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Bullen.
Uh, yeah, last Friday, Councilmember um Crumpler and I met with um a developer who um had some concerns, and we had a nice conversation, and I informed him, and I would like to put it out there to all developers that may have questions or concerns to approach us, not to undermine staff, but to approach us to get us informed before maybe it comes to council, because they won't feel vilified when when council members make comments or ask questions. So, but we had a very productive conversation, and um I look forward to having more conversations with developers in the future. I think they are very productive, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to uh thank the city manager and council and mayor and and city staff for the orientations that we've had, um, the many, many emails that we've had to to prepare us and get us ready for tonight and to uh get us prepared for uh working in the city. Uh, I'm super excited uh to get started. Um, and also to the community, uh, just saying that email stays the same, ward6@cityblm.org. Um, so all the residents uh who live in Ward 6, I'm looking forward to hearing from you. Um, you know, I appreciate my supporters, but now the election's over, and I think now's the time in which we just work to uh help all of Ward 6 and also the the city as a whole, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you. All right, well, uh, with that said, I think I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, okay, motion by Councilmember Bullen, second by Councilmember Becker. Others in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Gosh, I'm gonna love this council.